Good afternoon, this is the Board of Selectmen in meeting and acting as the Wage and Personnel Board. Meeting of November 19th at 1:00 PM. Please ask if anybody is recording this meeting. I announced that Lake Cam is taping this meeting as well. In accordance with the Governor's suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 COVID-19 emergency outbreak, the November 19th, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group conciliation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. As a preliminary matter, my name is Rich LaCamera. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for all members, staff, and persons anticipated on the agenda. So we have Brian Day.
Here.
We have Fabian.
Fabian is here.
We have Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant.
Yeah.
And we have Corinda Dunphy, Human Resource Director. The open meeting of the Lakefield Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2014, due to the current state emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. And out in to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Governor to suspend all public meetings. As such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted. The agenda material for this meeting allows the public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonably public access is affordable to the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Okay. Then item number two, I don't know if there's any Selectmen's announcements, but we certainly want to reinforce the current situation with COVID-19. The town currently has 33 active cases. And it's gone up, I think it's about 10 or 12 in just about a week. So, once again, to remind everybody, it's very important to be wearing your mask, to be socially distanced, and wash your hands. And as far as gathering coming up, especially for Thanksgiving, we ask you to please, I know how difficult it is for all of us. We were in the same situation. We want to make sure that everybody is protected. Any other announcements?
Okay. Sir, we got a couple of certifications on the fire department worth announcing.
Okay, did you want to do that, Brian?
Sure, so Chief O'Brien made us aware earlier that firefighter Gage Ramsen has obtained his firefighter one in two certification, which is excellent, gives the chief another interior firefighter to use in the force. And firefighter Nolan O'Brien has got his EMT license from the Commonwealth. So another firefighter that's able to ride the ambulance and ride the ambulances and fill in as necessary. So big thanks to those two gentlemen on furthering their career and looking forward to what they can do for us in the future.
Great, congratulations to the both of them. Thank you, Brian, for bringing that up. Anybody else? All set? Okay, so as you know, we've been meeting to talk about replacing the town administrator. So the first thing on the agenda is that, although Corinda has provided us a red line copy of the update of what our expectations were as far as the job description is concerned. And she's also had town council review it. So unless the board has any other questions or concerns about the job description, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description.
Can I just say one thing?
No.
I'm sorry.
I'm only kidding you.
After speaking with several department heads, I just wanted to, hold on one second, I think it was under under experience and training, where it says, "Or education and experience" that is equivalent showing a progressive leadership history in public and/or private organizations. I'd rather just see it say experience, but if I'm the only one, then we can move along.
Where are you, Leah? I'm sorry.
On page four.
Yep.
Right under experience and training, it says bachelor's degree and/or master's degree. And then that last sentence is, or, the next to the last sentence where it says, "Or education and experience" that is equivalent showing a progressive leadership history in public and/or private organizations. You know, we could get the perfect candidate from the private sector, but all the department heads that I've spoken with have stressed they would love someone who has municipal experience. But if I'm the only one on that, then that's fine, we can move forward.
The department heads that have provided me feedback have said similar things, but I don't know that I want to rule out candidates at this point, just in case we somehow only end up with candidates that were private sector.
Okay.
I doubt we would, but.
All right, noted, then I'm good. I'll make a motion to accept the job description as we amended it last week.
I'll second the motion with comment. I just want to say thank you to Corinda for doing a lot of extra work and getting this done and getting approval from town council as well.
Yeah, I appreciate those efforts too, Corinda. Poor Corinda tries to work a day off in every now and then, and she still ends up working.
Likewise. All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, next thing on the agenda at the last meeting, we discussed the makeup of the search committee, and I think we had a consensus. I'll entertain a motion to vote and finalize the proposed search committee.
So moved, I make a motion that we approve the search committee, but with some conversation.
Okay, can we mention the names, Leah, for the record, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, so I make a motion that the search committee is comprised of the three selectmen, the town accountant, Todd Hassett, Director of Inspection Services, Nate Darling, Finance Committee Chairperson, George Blahopolis, and Human Resource Director, Corinda Dunphy.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to say too, after speaking to the department heads that I did, having spoken to other department heads too in the past, all of them realized there can't be a 21-person search committee, okay? But they would like, most of them have indicated that they would like some to be able to offer some input, and I don't think that's unreasonable. In case I've never mentioned it before during the previous search, the Board of Selectmen shared the finalists. So at the point that the names become public, so up until that point, they're all confidential. But at the point the finalists are determined, that was the point that we had shared the resumes with the department heads, and we offered them the opportunity to weigh in or not to the selectmen. And most felt that that would be sufficient and give them, just make them feel like they were involved a little bit. So I would hope that we would consider, we don't have to decide on that right now, but I would just like to hope that we would consider doing something like that down the road.
Did you want to say something, Brian?
I was just gonna say, I believe at our last meeting that we had indicated we were open to that idea. As you said, Leah, once the names became public, so just the finalists, whatever those two or three might be. But yeah, I'm completely open if we want to do a bunch of quick round robin discussions with the finalists and the department heads.
I think as a suggestion, as you know, each one of us have been assigned department heads to talk to and get their comments back. And the ones that I've gotten have been pretty good, what the requirements are. And I haven't seen you guys yet. But a suggestion would be that we're certainly going to have to have a preliminary meeting with the search committee. Okay, before we even go out. So they understand what our expectations are. You know, as far as, well, maybe that first initial preliminary meeting, we could invite the department heads to that meeting, and they can talk about what their expectations are as far as, even though I've got mine in writing, and I'm sure that you're going to both summarize what your conversations were as well. But just as an idea, and then as Brian's suggestion is that as we get to the finalists, then we need to make sure that they have the information and provide their input to. That's just an idea, but.
I mean, actually, every department head I spoke with was content, happy with the search committee that we've selected. It's just they said, it would be nice to just be a little, you know. And I respect that, I think we have really strong department heads. So otherwise, everyone I spoke with was happy with the search committee that's been put in place and already feel good about the process, so.
Okay, anything else? We don't have to decide that today, but if you guys want to do something like that. All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
They are.
LaCamera, aye. So the next thing is to discuss and vote to hire a search firm for the town administrator search. It's too bad you guys didn't pick up your folder, because Corinda put together this wonderful binder for us.
I know, I'm gonna get it, but I did print off a bunch of the stuff, so I've actually seen a lot of it.
I know you guys are busy. do you want to give an update, Corinda, of what you did?
So, the four that you chose, I sent emails out. And for whatever reason, that MMA consulting group, I just couldn't reach. So we were down to three, and then, should I be saying the names or not? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can say the names, because we want to talk about them, that's no problem.
Okay, so then, Human Resources Services, they do mostly HR compliance and compensation. So they deferred, they referred us to MRI, Municipal Resources, which is their partner in recruiting. So we're down to just two now. And as you know, Need Tolerant, Tolerman, and Costa is sort of a unique, they don't do the whole recruiting piece of it. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so we have two different approaches, two different proposals. And I guess what we need to do is discuss those proposals. And if you want to interview both of these companies, we can set that up before we make a decision, if that's what you want to do.
Okay.
Corinda, have you, or has anybody spoken to any of the lists that MRI gave us for references in Massachusetts?
I spoke with, I haven't done that yet, but I did speak with Todd, because he has, one of his towns that he works with, he knows that they had a really positive result with MRI. So, and I've heard good things just from the emails that we share with other, like on MMA, like with the HR component. Like I've heard really good things about searches with them, so.
I think theirs was the packet that also provided a proposed timeline and everything. So they were giving us a lot of information. They even put a fee, I think, in for us to look at, right? That's the same one, correct?
Yes.
I like how MRI has given us kind of the fee breakdown, where Need Tolerant and Costa, it's an hourly, I mean $200 an hour, you'd be at 50 hours before you hit what we set aside for budgets. I don't know that it makes or breaks me on either, but I like seeing the service fees spelt out rather than the hourly rate.
Well, we can make a decision right now if you want with the MRI one, or we can interview both companies.
I mean, I would like to interview both, because they're both a different approach. I just don't want these interviews to take place well into December, because I really want to keep this kind of moving.
I thought we'd try to do it the first and next week, if we could.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, that's just me, but.
Yep, no, I would.
I'm happy to interview both of them if we can get them in quick.
Yep.
Okay, when would you like to do that?
I can't do Monday, but otherwise I can do Tuesday or Wednesday.
Just checking your schedule here. Thursday is Thanksgiving.
I could do Monday evening, but I can't do Monday during the day, I have to.
Yeah, my Monday morning, I've got some appointments. And then Tuesday afternoon, I've got some appointments. So I could do Tuesday, I could do late Tuesday. I could do late Monday. Wednesday is pretty open right now.
Yeah, and that would be the only thing on the agenda, correct, Rich?
That's correct.
Okay, I mean barring any emergency or whatever, but.
Do we want, does anybody have a preference on day? Do you want to do Tuesday? I mean, we could do Monday.
It's kind of up to you, Brian. If you want Monday night, I can do Monday night. If you want Tuesday during the day, I can do, you know.
Monday night's probably a little better.
Okay, so we can do Monday night.
We're still good on posting time, right?
Just enough time.
Can I interrupt for a second, though? I wonder, before you decide, though, I got to make sure that they're both available, right?
No, I know.
Yep, yep.
We could always cancel and move it, though, right?
Yeah. All right, so why don't you do that? And then try this afternoon, because we really have to repost it by.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the evening. Yep.
So you think like 6 o'clock?
I'll take 6:30 would be better. I have to take my dad into Boston for a doctor appointment, so.
All right, so we'll see if we can work that out. If we can work it out quickly, then need to tell Tracy, so Tracy can post it. And if they're not, then let's see if another day is available for them. And Brian doesn't prefer during the day on Tuesday either, right, Brian?
Tuesday, I've got appointments that are going to keep me busy from probably about 12 to 5.
Okay, so you could do Tuesday morning.
Most likely, yeah.
If you can, we can do Tuesday night, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I can do Tuesday night, that's fine with me too. So why don't we just say either Monday night or Tuesday night?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll block them off now, just to.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda is, Corinda sent you the community profile. And Brian had sent some comments to some changes that need to be updated. Also Todd, it should be, if it's not done, was going to update all the financial information this morning.
Yes, he gave it to me.
Okay, so Leah, unless you have any additional items that you wanted to?
Nope, I picked out sort of the same information that Brian did, that was kind of outdated. And then I think the update covered all those.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll update the profile. And then I guess when we meet, the next time we meet, we'll just approve it. So we'll send you out a final draft.
Okay.
Kind of okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. We had here discussed the timeline for hiring the town administrator, but I guess that might be a little premature to do that until we find out who we're going to use. So, I mean, unless you guys want to come up with some kind of a date, an end date, let's put it that way.
I hate to put up an end date, but let's just say sooner than later, if we could work on everything.
Let's keep the train moving down the rails.
Okay, so we'll wait on that, all right. Okay, going on to item number eight is that discussed to vote to approve the sign of releasing indemnification agreement for Cornerstone Community Church. This is a private cemetery, okay, at Mullin Hill Church on the corner of Island and County. And the town had never accepted it as a town cemetery. But in the meantime, what was happening was that any charges for purchasing of graves and so forth and so on was provided to the town, okay? And so they want to stay as a private cemetery. So they want to do that. So I asked town council to put together releasing indemnification agreement that basically says, okay, you're taking over the complete responsibility, because we're actually doing some lawn mowing and care service for that for a number of years. So the money that we owe them is $3,270 something dollars, yeah?
Is it the $3,975 there?
Yeah, whatever that is. So we need a motion for the board to approve this indemnification.
I make a motion that we approve the indemnification agreement with Cornerstone Community Church.
Sorry, I'm muted, Brian.
Thank you, second the motion with one quick comment. Is this one of the cemeteries that we've got the fence insured?
I don't know.
You know what?
They're all coming off.
It's got a rock wall in front of it, there is some fencing on the parking lot side, but we will check that for sure.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
They are.
LaCamera, aye, okay. Next on the agenda is the Holland Cemetery, Holland Road Cemetery. The MBTA wants to get access to the railroad tracks through the Holland Road Cemetery. And attached is their letter of their request, along with a letter from the Cemetery Commission. And I'm not sure, Brian, if you had the opportunity to go up there, but Leah and I had done it, this was during the summer, if I remember correctly, sometime in July.
Yep.
But anyways, so if you look at their request from the MBTA, they want us to, they want to take that road, which is in the cemetery, and take it by eminent domain. Well, we're not going to agree to do that. You know, we don't want to sell the road, I mean, you know. So I think that that's issue number one. Number two is that they don't want to maintain the road. Well, if they're going to use it, then they ought to be maintaining the road, because that cemetery is at least 200 years old or more and doesn't get much activity up there anymore. But we just can't say, well, you can use the road. Because if they're going to bring in trucks or whatever, then especially in the springtime, that could be a problem. So there's that issue as well. The other thing that they agreed to do was put up a fence, which they say they will do, that's not a problem. But we had asked them to scan the property along the road to make sure that there's nobody buried in that particular area, which they have not agreed to do. So they're saying that they will pay for the fence and provide $10,000, $10,800 is the fair market value for that road. And if you look at the letter from the Cemetery Commission, and basically they're just saying what I just said, is the MBGA ought to be given an easement to the property and not the ownership of any portion thereof. And that prior to any construction or ground penetration survey be conducted to ensure no human remains are disturbed. And the proposed installation of post and rail fence shall be installed after the ground penetration survey and before any construction to aid in the protection of the cemetery proper. And then upon granting an easement, the MBTA shall be responsible for maintaining the road and any damage caused by them. So that's basically the situation. So if the board is in agreement with those conditions by the cemetery and what I just talked about, I'll entertain a motion for the board to have me send a letter to the MBTA outlining the conditions of the use of that road.
Go ahead, Leah.
I need to express a little disappointment that, you know, that's what we call in my book, a resting place. So we've had people resting there for many, many, many years. I'm surprised that they wouldn't have wanted to go in and check the ground, because just from years, like we said, there have been some people buried there recently within the last few years. So there is some that are not that old, but the majority is, some of them are like 200-year-old plots. And just from storms and the way the ground changes and everything else, you can tell that I'm not comfortable that the ground hasn't been checked there. And we all know that even 200 years ago, folks didn't always have enough money to afford a marker, so they would make a makeshift marker. And after all these years, we don't know what temporary markers may have been in place. So I can't sign off on anything on this, or at least I don't want to, unless the ground has been checked. I mean, come on, that's the least that we can do for people. I'm surprised the train wouldn't do that automatically.
Okay.
I share a similar concern on scanning ground. My thoughts when I read the conditions were not just notify the Cemetery Commission, but then what? Right, would work come to a halt? Would it be on the Cemetery Commission's back to relocate any remains? Would the MBTA be responsible for relocating remains if they really had to go through that portion of the ground? So maybe some clarity around that, unless you have already know.
But I can tell you, and I'm not speaking for the Cemetery Commission, there's no way they're going to move anybody's remains at this point. If their remains are in the area where they're going to have access to, I don't think they'll do it, so.
Yeah, I.
Like Leah says, Leah and I went out there, we looked at it. You know, a lot of times, I don't want to say the old days, but families would have, babies would have died or whatever, and they would bury them, but they wouldn't have markers, and they wouldn't have headstones, is exactly where they're located. And that's kind of what we're talking about. Because if you look at the roadway, and I think there's a map in there, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
I was trying to find it, I'm not familiar with the location of that cemetery.
That the road is really close to the edge of the plots itself. So that was a major concern which we brought up when we were there.
Right, the beginning part of the road, the part of the road that comes up off the street for, I mean, I don't even know, at least maybe, I don't know, Rich, would you say 50 or 60 feet? Is pretty much just road, okay? But then, all of a sudden, it opens up and you can see the cemetery. And that part where, and again, the. and, and again, the Cemetery Commission has done, you know, their due diligence at checking whatever records they have. And it's, I'm afraid there may possibly be some, you know, some burial places right there that may not be marked. And if there isn't, then that's good news. But I, I don't see how, I, I, there's no way I want to approve anything until we know for sure. And also, um, I know on the other side is a Native American burial ground in the woods, okay? Now, don't forget, the woods have probably changed through the years, too, with the way, you know, everything grows. I just want to be sure that there's, before they go putting a road in there that they're going to use all the time, that, you know.
I'm, I'm not asking the board to approve, what I'm asking the board is for me to send a letter to them with our concerns. That's all I'm saying. I'm not asking.
Definitely, you know, and, and then the other things, too, the easement on the property and whatever. I mean, I agree with the Cemetery Commission recommendations here, Rich, which is what, you know, so.
I mean, I don't think we should give it up, for sure.
No.
I, I think that, you know, because, you know, they come and go, too. And, you know, that cemetery has been there a couple of hundred years, maybe even longer. So we don't want to disturb that at all.
Right, and, you know, if, let's just say this. If it wasn't for them going to use the road, the road doesn't really require a ton of maintenance. However, if they're going to be using the road, they're the ones that should be having to maintain it. So, I mean, I, I agree with all these, you know, so I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, send a letter to the MBTA reflecting, these conditions, uh, what we have here.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Uh, no further from me.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay, um, under new business, I'm not sure if we, Leah provided an update to the board about the, uh, new clerk in the selectman's office, so I'd like you to, I know the board approved the job description and so forth, but, you know, you went through the posting and interview process, and, you know, I think your recommendation was to hire, uh.
Yep, um, I don't know if we have paperwork for it, but, um, we did post the position. Um, we got some resumes. One person stood out because they had, you know, excellent municipal experience, uh, pretty much exactly the things that we were looking for. I, I think the person would be an exceptional candidate. Clarinda and I did the interview, and we seem, we both seemed to be very happy. Um, so I don't know if I'm have a motion to appoint Bonnie, I can't even.
Tucker, Bonnie Tucker.
Yeah, Bonnie Tucker. Uh, we had changed the job description to a part-time, so, um, so it's going to be part-time for her. Um, so anyway, so I make a motion that we, um, appoint Bonnie Parker to the part-time clerk's position in the selectman's office.
Second the motion with one quick question for Clarinda. Uh, this, this is the candidate you and I spoke at length about a couple of weeks ago. Okay, just want to make sure. It's been a busy week or two.
And part of that motion should be pending all the things that we do, the, all the human resource conditions.
Physical security checks, yes.
Yep.
Already been done.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I. Okay, another new business item is that, uh, the, uh, pre-disaster mitigation grant, new hazardous mitigation grant. We have the, we have received the documents which we discussed at the last meeting, I believe. And, uh, so what we need to do is, we need to, it's $7,500 of FEMA grant, which the, the fire chief worked on with, um, SIRPED, so this is a good thing. And, um, so you need to vote to authorize me to, uh, sign the contract.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are. And the camera, I. Okay, any other old business, any other new business?
Mr. Chair?
No more.
Some old business?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you receive, did the board receive the email that I sent to you from, um, the planning board regarding the updated plans for 149 Bedford Street?
Uh, we did, and I made, I sent my individual comments. If the board wants, it's no different than the comments we had already provided them before. And because it's a revised plan, I don't know if the, we just got it at 11:30 today. And, um, I'm sorry, maybe it was 10:30 today.
Yeah.
Maybe an hour earlier. And, um, you know, I don't see, uh, myself, I don't see where they've addressed any of the setback requirements, which is a major concern. So we have already expressed that in writing. Tracy had sent a letter to the planning board from my last meeting, basically saying that, uh, we weren't happy with what was being presented. But thank you for bringing it up. I don't know if anybody has any other comments.
Yeah, I was going to respond to, um, the chair of the planning board also saying, you know, I have another meeting tonight while they're in their planning board meeting. We have this meeting right now. I mean, you know, kind, kind of getting the revised plan just a couple hours, three hours, whatever, before their meeting. That's not sufficient.
I was just, I have one other comment, which is just in general for when we get these plans. I, I don't know why we always seem to get black and white plans that are really hard to read. I don't know if we can start getting them in color so that we can quickly look at a new set of plans and see the changes. I mean, it's really difficult to look at these things and find the changes without being able to reference another one.
I agree, Brian. In fact, you know, um, I've, uh, actually, I've talked to, uh, two planning board members, you know, about this process, and I've talked to Mark, all separately, so you know, that, um, you know, we need to fix this process because this process is broken. Because we don't get the plans on a timely basis, you know, and here we are, we got a situation here that we reviewed the initial plan, they supposedly came in with a revised plan, but revised plan, they didn't have copies of the revised plan to the planning board, so oh, over a week has gone by, and we never got copies of the revised plan. They just got the revised plan. They should raise their hand and say, hey, we got to stop here, you know, you got to start over. Because, you know, this is not a good thing for us, and we got to, we got to discuss this with the planning board. Because this happens quite a bit, you know, and they don't, you know, they don't get the plans on a timely basis. And which means they don't get it on a timely basis, the department heads, which is more important than us, quite frankly, don't get it to make their comments, and that's an issue.
I, I mean, we're talking about, you know, um, sometimes brand-new projects. I don't understand what the rush is. I mean, uh, okay, I do, but I don't understand why we know when the planning board, if I'm not mistaken, it used to always book their meetings out almost a year in advance. So I know they could quite possibly be trying to get the amended plan in, in time for the meeting. But, you know, they, I think folks need to remember these, the engineering companies, the owners of the projects, everything. I, I think they have to remember that, you know, the planning board is volunteer. I mean, selectmen are volunteer. You know, we're, we're doing this to help our community. It's not our full-time gig, so we can't just be given a plan like less than 24 hours before there's going to be discussion on it. Um, this is part of the process. And, you, you know, it, it's, it's up to each one of us to do our own, you know, amount of work that we think is, is, is good. But, uh, you know, I, I have way more things on my agenda today that I already had a meeting this morning. You know, I, by the time I got out of that one, I'm like, oh my God, I don't have time to read this plan before we jump into this meeting. So, you know, I think there needs to be a little bit more consideration of, of the, of the town's time, including the planning board. Plain and simple.
Okay. All said of that, went out? Okay, uh, next on the agenda, is, there's no other old business or new business or whatever, okay? Trying to keep it short here.
Yep.
Um, okay, next is to, um, make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with Mass General Laws, Chapter 214, Section 1B in 45 CFR 160, 162, and 164, the HIPAA privacy rule, uh, to discuss a residence request for a waiver of ambulance charges pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, uh, approve the executive session minutes of April 27, 2020, May 4, 2020, May 6, 2000, May 26, 2020, June 17, 2020, June 22, 2020, and September 18, 2020.
So moved.
You're not going to repeat that?
I'm not.
Chair, and not to return to open session.
Thank you very much, and not to return to open session. Uh, you want to second that motion, Brian?
I second it with authority.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I. Okay, so you should have the, um, access for the executive minute.